Good evening and welcome. It is now 6:00 PM and there being a quorum of council, I hereby call the City Council's Special Joint Meeting of January 30th, 2025 to order.
Good evening. I call the January 30th, 2025 Special Joint Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners with the Monroe City Council to order.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners, we want to welcome you today and thank you for your time tonight. County Manager, Attorney's Staff, we look forward to this opportunity to speak with you guys.
I would like to recognize our County Manager, Brian Matthews, for initial comments from Union County.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you, the Board, as well as your staff, for the opportunity to come and meet with you. This really sort of came about at some discussions with the county and the city about our current arrangements for water and sewer. We both have sort of mirror image agreements. You purchase water from us, we purchase sewer capacity from you. And I realize you guys are in the process of considering expansion or working on expansion for your plant. And so conversations have been had with our staff about moving forward. What do we do? How does that work? Are we interested in some additional capacity? And how do we move forward from there? And so that's, I think, what led to this discussion with the two boards. I know that, and I think we've had those discussions board to board, it's just been staff to staff. So it's important for us all to understand what exactly are we going to accomplish and where we go from there. I would, you know, ask Mark if he has any comments or anything he'd like to add to that.
Thank you, Brian. The City of Monroe is in the process of expanding its wastewater treatment facility for an addition of three MGD. It's important for us to know if the city would like to purchase some additional treatment capacity and if so, how much. The city has, in the, I guess it was the last quarter of the calendar year, went through a rate study as part of the beginning of the financing process for that project. So we have completed that. The engineering of that project is well underway and will be complete soon, and then that will be going through the bid process. We have a scheduled meeting with the local government commission at the 1st of February for an introductory round of discussions on the financing of the project. So it becomes important to know if the county is, would like to purchase additional capacity at the plant, how much is that? That all figures into the financing model. And this, quite frankly, that's good for us to know right now because that does have an impact potentially on rates, et cetera. So that's where we're at today. We're just, we really need to know what the county's interest is in the plant and how we can move forward with that.
So this current board, you know, we have two brand new board members and a member who was appointed previously and now elected, has not really had an opportunity to discuss this and make a formal decision. I will tell you that the previous board, we had had some discussions, and at the staff level, we had recommended that we do seek some additional capacity from the city. Currently, we have a contractual arrangement or an agreement with the city for 2.65 million gallons out of your current wastewater treatment plant. And so we're really like a customer. Will we purchase that capacity if we need it? We pay for capital based on the operation and maintenance of the plant, but we don't pay for expansion. We pay for that particular portion of it. Because the city is looking at expanding your capacity, I think from a staffing perspective, staff perspective, we would be interested in some additional capacity for our east side sewer. This is what this serves. We obviously need our board to give us authorization that yes, we want to go ahead and do that, that we want to purchase that. But I will tell you, from the staff's perspective, we think that that is something that we would want to have as far as additional capacity for the east side. One of our biggest questions, though, is what does that do with the current plant and the current operation of the plant? Because, of course, we have an arrangement with, upon the current plant. So I would be curious to know, is it your intent to operate the current plant basically permanently or in perpetuity or however you intend on operating the current plant? That would be a question I would have. I don't hear anybody speaking.
And you may not be.
No, so the current plant, we do intend to operate current plant for as long as it's useful to and practical to do so.
Okay.
Okay. The, this is an expansion.
Okay.
Of the treatment capacity.
Very good.
This, this treatment capacity, additional treatment capacity, adding a different treatment train, does give us the flexibility of some rehabilitation on the current plant to extend the life of that plant, and that is the intention.
Okay. Very good. That was a question that I had, and to hear you call it an expansion, I think, is number one, that's comfortable for us. That makes us feel better about the way the agreement is structured. I can't, I'm not going to ask the board to give us a decision tonight, they haven't had a chance to discuss that. We do have a retreat coming up February 12th. We can have a further discussion with the board and possibly get some direction on the 12th. I know you need answers, you know, soon because you're going through your financing and for what you need to do with the LGC. So, you know, again, I will tell you that we will certainly recommend to the board that they consider purchasing some additional capacity from the city out of your expansion. It would be our recommendation that we follow very similarly to what the agreement is that we have. We already have a structure for an agreement in place. I think that works very well. I mean, as far as the amount, obviously, we can discuss that, but I like the way the agreement is structured. I think that makes sense. No sense in reinventing the wheel as far as that goes. Any concerns with the structure of the agreement? And if there are, I just need to know so we can, we can have those discussions.
The agreement is structured, I think, is fine. There's always some things that are going to need to be interpreted, I think, if you read it, if you read through it. But the expansion, I think, is pretty clear. It's just, it's a negotiated agreement about the expansion. Maintenance and everything like that, there are obviously terms to note that probably can't be explored.
I have a couple of questions. What is your timeline for anticipated completion when this additional capacity will be ready? I'm looking at you, I guess, whoever.
Anticipated construction begin at the end of the year of '25 and then three-year construction timeframe.
Twenty years. You're asking us how much additional we'd be willing or interested in purchasing. I guess my question would be, kind of reverse that. How much of that capacity do you anticipate the city needing that would be available for us to have a chance at?
The expansion is a three MGD expansion, and we're prepared to use all three MGD over time. I think historically, there's been an offer, you know, if the county expands something at Catawba and then they offer us additional capacity, you know, the vice, the reverse of that is offering the county the opportunity to let us know what capacity needs you may have. It all goes into the planning process. So I don't know what the county's anticipated needs are. Right now, you have 2.65 MGD. I think on a, on a average basis, and I'm going to look back to your staff, is it probably in the 1, 1.7, 1.8?
Yes.
So right now, you're using about 1.7, 1.8 of the 2.65, so there's a lot of capacity left right there. You know, I know that the town of Marshall is a customer, and they have some agreements with Anson County. If they, if they come offline in the next, I don't know, whenever, 36, 48 months, they are using somewhere in the neighborhood of 250,000 to 300,000 gallons on an average day, then that's added, if they go to Anson County with that, that adds, frees up county capacity at the Monroe plant.
Have we projected out when the county would reach the limit of the current agreement as far as using up that capacity?
Not a projection to that, as Manager Watson indicates. We're not sure when Marshall will come offline and that flow will come back to us. We obviously think that we've probably got at least another 10 years' worth of capacity if we get back the flow from Marshall. Now, all this is contingent upon the level of economic development and industrial development we're able to accomplish in that Wingate area. And we could use up all of that flow very quickly, depending on how successful we are for that. I will tell you that the number that staff to staff that we indicated was 750,000 gallons. From staff to staff, we said that would be the number we would recommend consider. My, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the city is looking at a potential larger expansion at some point, maybe in the future. You have the ability to go larger if you need to.
So it's a, it's a three-phase expansion. This is the first phase. And so three MGD to start with, second phase, you know, you're adding another three or four MGD and then another three or four MGD to that. And I think with rehabbing the current facility, you know, that's going to mean a long-term, sustainable facility at that location. You know, who knows what the future holds? But three MGD is for good amount on an expansion.
Do you have a discharge limit for a certain amount at this, on this site already?
We, we do, and that is a, that's a really good question and a very interesting topic. So we are, we have our discharge permit, we are, and I don't want to use the right words, Scott, but we are, we're currently permitted for a discharge of.
10.4.
10.4. We can increase that to 15.
Maximum of 15.4.
Maximum of 15.4. So what we're, what I've always thought is a very good and practical thing is to go ahead and permit that up to the maximum.
Okay.
Because, and this is just point of information, the City Council is seeking an IBT from the Catawba Basin into the Rocky River Basin to discharge flow into the Rocky River. That discharge flow enters the Rocky River way up in the corner of Union County, that Union, very, way up, way up in the corner. All right. So the Rocky River has a load limit, and if that load, if that discharge from Mecklenburg County, the city of Charlotte, is entering at the top of the river, and as far as we're concerned, that reduces or creates a situation where whether it's Union County or whether it's the city of Monroe, or whether it's potentially Wingate or Marshall, anybody else that's discharging into the Yadkin Basin and is going into the Rocky River is probably going to have a harder time permitting downstream because the load is being put in upstream.
Do you have plans to expand that 15 million gallon discharge permit greater than that?
Not with this phase.
Not with this phase, okay.
Not with this phase. But just be aware, I mean, that is, we have all, we have attended the IBT public hearings and taken a position against that discharge load into Rocky River. And I would expect that would continue to be our position because that, that limits our future. That cuts into our resource.
Have we taken a position on that? I'm not sure. Have we taken a position on that?
We've attended the meetings just like the city, but we haven't formulated a position on it.
Okay. I know that we have had similar, but this is about withdrawing water from Catawba. You know, we've had some similar concerns from Charlotte withdrawing water from Catawba. That's, he's talking about a discharge. We're obviously concerned about that, and it raised our concerns about that. And so we can have further discussions with the board about our position on this discharge in the Rocky River.
I'll just reiterate, so, you know, that discharge, we're fine right now. We're fine up to 15 MGD discharge limit of our permit, but it's, it's beyond that in the future. Could be that, you know, I think we need to, we need to look down the road and see and think about what's going to be happening.
Board, do you have any comments, questions? Commissioner Hams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, I thank you for, to the City of Monroe for hosting us tonight. Yeah, I think that historically, we've shared a great agreement with sewer and also water, and I believe that there's a general willingness to continue that agreement. Obviously, I can't speak for the board, and we're going to have to have some discussion on that, but, but it makes a lot of sense because, you know, we have, well, we're currently looking at projects for the Catawba in partnership with Lancaster for expansion there. And so, you know, I appreciate the clarification from Manager Watson regarding City Monroe's plans. As I understand it, and I think a lot of our questions have already been answered, so I came into this meeting with several questions, including, you know, whether or not this was going to be an addition or a new facility. So I'm just assuming that the City of Monroe is looking at this addition just to accommodate additional growth, maybe commercial or residential? Is that, is that correct?
No, it, it has to do with keeping a good functioning facility. So we have an aging facility, and we need to be able to rehab some of those aging concrete structures. And in order to do that, you have to take some offline. Well, we can't take it offline and rehab it if we don't have some needs to do that. At the same time, we are looking to the future. Monroe has always invested in its utilities, looking to the future. And that's put us in the position we're in today, having the capacity we have to serve both the residential growth that has already been approved, the number of rooftop's, in addition to any of the industrial customers that would move into Monroe. So we have that capacity today. We all know, sitting at these tables, that the absolute longest lead time planning and construction of anything we do in local government is these wastewater treatment plants. And, and so, you know, you have to look to the future and you have to look far enough down the road with an eye toward planning for the future. Monroe has very, Monroe Council has very wisely kept its rates where they need to be in order to afford, to set aside monies to pay for some, some of the expansion. Of course, some of the expansion will have to, we'll have to borrow those funds on, but they've done a good job in planning the financials for this.
Thank you. And just another question. So you mentioned a phased rollout, phased expansion, so the first phase would be 3 million gallons per day. As far as the length of time, now, obviously, that's going to take about three years. What's the total, you know, I'm sure that you guys have probably discussed, you know, how long it's going to take you to reach your maximum there?
I'm going to turn around here. It's a 15-year, it's a 15-year D expansion total, like all three phases.
The first phase, Commissioner Hams, will take the capacity to 12.4. The second phase will expand it six more million gallons. The final phase, the phase three final build out, is 24 MGD.
And how many years do we think?
We expect, we anticipate to see phase two expansion in approximately 10 years, and then phase three, approximately 20, 25 years out. It's all contingent upon the growth.
That's where you have to keep a finger on the pulse.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Sods?
I guess my question is, what's the price? I assume you're modeling the cost of the expansion, and then that will be what we would need to pay for that additional, as Matthew said, proposing 750,000. So that your modeling will give you a benchmark to use for the pricing, and then that's subject to negotiation as far as a contract for that additional capacity, correct?
That's correct. So right now, we're looking in the $110 million range. Could be 115, could be 105, like it's in that $110 million range. Then that cost allocates out to a price per gallon, et cetera. We are having, we expect to have the construction bids back August the 1st. So we'll know what, we're going to know what numbers are going to look like at that time. Right now, it's all projection.
You already have the permits for this expansion?
Yes, sir.
I imagine that was a big hurdle.
They were already in place.
Great. Oh. So what would be the process that would propose for whatever capacity we're looking to deal with? And then discussion of the pricing, how do we move forward with that? To see if it is actually something we want to do.
Typically, the first off the board would, you know, give staff direction that you are interested in a capacity, whatever that is, in additional capacity. We would then need staff to staff and really iron out the, as the attorney said, the sort of the specifics of the agreement, how that works. They would build that into their rate model that helps them understand the rate impact it's going to have, and then ultimately, that would yield, this is what our, this is what our annual costs are going to be. Right now, the way the annual costs work is that we pay for the flow. So even though we have 2.65 million gallons, we don't flow 2.65 million gallons, we pay for the amount of flow that we send.
You pay for what you use.
And there's a prescribed formula for how that's calculated, and then we pay a proportionate share of the operation, maintenance, R and R for the, for the facility. So if there are capital projects that have to go with maintaining that facility, we pay a proportionate share for that. And I would anticipate it would be very similar. We would have that same structure for this.
So that is not participating in the cost of the actual expansion, but repair, fix-it cost after it's offline, whether we're using it or not, we're going to share in that.
That's the way the current agreement is structured. That's the way that current is structured. And the same thing is true for the water side.
Right, right. Standard, standard deal.
Right. If we expand and, and the city would like to expand, then we can have that discussion about additional capacity, but they don't pay the cost of the expansion. They only pay their share of the capital or the R and R for those types of things. So it's a very similar agreement as far as that goes. And I mean, I know we're talking a lot about sewer, but I will say that the city, if the city is interested in discussing additional water on the Catawba side, we have an IBT that doesn't allow us to sell water from the Yadkin side, but on the Catawba side, we already sell you water. Now, that's based on a grandfathered 1.99 million gallon flow. We would certainly, you know, be happy to discuss with the board and staff to staff if you're interested in some additional flow. It would probably require an IBT from the city to do that. And I'm not saying you want to do that, but that would probably be what it would require if you needed some additional water on the Catawba side, if they were willing to, you know, offer that as an, as an option. We do have that arrangement, water and sewer. And it works very well. You guys get something from us, we get something from you.
Has the city discussed that at all? Any additional water needs that we might be able to accommodate as we look for expansion on the Catawba?
The city has not discussed additional capacity coming from the Catawba plant. We do have plans to modify some of our processes in our own treatment plant to increase the production level at the Monroe plant, in addition to another water source that we acquired recently. So, you know, all of that's in play right now, but that doesn't preclude some future conversation about additional capacity coming from the Catawba.
Counsel, any comments, questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I have one additional question, maybe to our staff. The initial projections that Manager Watson had mentioned regarding, you know, cost and rates, has that been shared with our staff at this point? Do we have any, any initial projection as far as the numbers are concerned?
No, I don't think we've talked about numbers. We, we have our own, we've same, very same estimates on our own side, obviously, and we program. And we program potentially a, in our budget to be able to cover at least some cost if we were to actually contract for some additional flow. That number may not be correct, but we did program some money in the budget in, in case we were to do that. We anticipated that it would be a 100-plus million dollar project with 3 million gallons. You're not going to get a buy for a mess in that, in my opinion.
So right now, in our projections, you know, in the early part of the engineering, the estimates are all over the place. And we've done the best that we can do right now to project for the rate modeling that we just completed. But as the days go by and more of the engineering and design work gets completed, then those numbers start firming up until you get to August the first and we open the bid documents and find out what's real numbers.
Are you all doing a scene at risk or design build or what's your process for the construction on it?
Traditional design.
Traditional design, build, okay. Those are all the questions I have. My, my main concern was, or just question was, how are you interpreting the, you know, expansion versus a new plant? Were you intended on operating the new plant? Those are all great things to hear. Obviously, our board will have to discuss this and give us some direction on that. But I think that, you know, we've come a long way. I'm comfortable in, in, in having that conversation with the board and making a recommendation and then getting their input from that, or their direction on that.
And so with that being said, we'll take all this information, anything that you want to share here tonight, or we'll take it to our board retreat on February 12th. And that way, staff can give us, you know, their recommendations, what they're projecting our future needs are. And then we can come back to you with, after we've had a chance to sit down with staff and, and get that presentation.
And likewise, if there's anything else that you guys need, any other questions that you have, please feel free to reach out to us, let us know. You know, that way we can continue to keep communication open. Any other closing comments? County commissioners, thank you so much for your time today. Staff, every one of you guys that are here, everyone who set this up, ordered dinner. I'd like for anyone who's here listening as well, thank you for your time today. And with that, go out here and motion Georgia. I have a motion second, those in favor?
This concludes this special joint meeting with Monroe City, your board. I note that the board adjourned. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed.